I now give the floor to the representatives of Notre Dame Law School, Human Rights Clinic, and Notre Dame Reparations Design and Compliance Lab.
Madam President, please.
My name is Professor Diane Desierto. I am joined by my colleague, Professor Francisco Urbina. Excellencies, in yesterday's hearing, Judge Gomez addressed questions to several states on the potential about the court's dialogue with other international courts, and more poignantly, what message the court was expected to give about the nature of damage from transboundary harm here. We submit, your excellencies, this court has always powerfully spoken not just to other courts, but to present and future generations of the inter-American system and the rest of humanity through the authoritativeness of its judicial decisions. The advisory opinions of this court are themselves subsidiary sources of international law. They provide not just interpretive guidance and normative clarity, but unlike the advisory opinions of the International Court of Justice or the International Tribunal on the Law of the Sea, it is only this court that applies conventionality control to its advisory opinions, as the court very rightly pointed out in its 2014 advisory opinion on the rights and guarantees of children in the context of migration or in need of international protection, as well as its advisory opinion on the institution of asylum in 2018. The message that this court gives through its judicial decisions, contentious or advisory, is thus always purposeive and intentional to achieve effective respect and guarantee of human rights and to advance the same goals of the inter-American human rights system. Excellencies, there are two undisputed points that we wish to bring first to the attention of the court as a matter of law. First, that there is no dispute on what is scientifically and legally required at this point in time for all states' parties to the UNFCCC as to the climate actions on mitigation to achieve net zero neutrality and avoid further transboundary harm. On March 15, 2024, the UNFCCC Conference of Parties reported five decisions, legally binding decisions, that were taken on the outcomes of the first global stocktake, the Global Goal on Adaptation, the Just Transition Work Program, among others. These decisions were filed, were issued after we filed our brief in December, and they are now part of the corpus of applicable law on climate change that should be considered today. Second, excellencies, there is no dispute that the 12th paragraph of the preamble to the Paris Agreement expressly obligates states' parties taking action to address climate change to respect, promote, and consider their respective obligations on human rights, the right to health, the rights of indigenous peoples, local communities, migrants, children, persons with disabilities, people in vulnerable situations, as well as the right to development, gender equality, empowerment of women, and intergenerational equity. This is the very object and purpose of the treaty that is the Paris Agreement, and the entire regime that was built therein under Article II objectives was constructed with that understanding. The question therefore before this honorable court, as it deliberates on its message to the world, is this: What does it mean then for states, especially the states in the inter-American system, that have to take climate actions to respect, promote, and consider their respective human rights obligations? We invite the court's attention in our brief to the international legal principle of effectiveness, which contains two elements: that we must strive for interpretation of multiple treaties simultaneously by giving effect as much as possible to each and every obligation, and second, to ensure that the interpretation of these treaties are evolutive. These are legal tasks that are inherent to the judicial function and appropriate to this court. You have heard this far from the many testimonies and the hearings of the multitude of urgent remedial actions for differentiated climate vulnerabilities, risks, and materializing harms as we speak. However, excellencies, all of these demonstrate a common gap, an architectural pathology that this court alone can structurally address. While states are committing to enable themselves to undertake climate actions towards net zero neutrality, they are doing so under non-binding voluntary declarations under their nationally determined contributions. This means that if they fail to meet the benchmarks that they set in the NDCs, there is no legal consequence under international law for the failure to realize those particular voluntary commitments. As we have shown with our quantitative and qualitative data from the Notre Dame Reparations Labs, Climate Change Reparations dataset, even among national, regional, and international tribunals in the world, there's been so much variability on pecuniary and non-pecuniary climate reparations, much more so even further variability when reparative measures are enforced or implemented. Because of this asymmetry, where you have an overwhelmingly binding, far-ranging, applicable international law for this global climate emergency, and yet have asserted non-binding and non-law nature for NDCs, we believe, excellencies, that this court can generate the much-needed urgent human rights outcomes at the highest structural level of greatest impact for the rest of the world. This is why our proposal, as we have stated it in the brief, is twofold, and one is to enable, because of the mandate of this court, to require states in the inter-American system to conduct a human rights audit in regard to what they are already committing today under their existing NDCs and whether those are consistent with their obligations under the American Convention and related norms. No one has done that thus far, excellencies, and no one is being compelled to do that. The second is to require that in the design of the next NDC, which as the International Union on the Conservation of Nature spoke about powerfully this morning, and we agree with them, in the design of the next crucial NDC that will be path determining for how we approach the escalating climate crisis, those NDCs have to respect, protect, and fulfill international human rights law as it is mandated in the preamble of the Paris Agreement and as is consistent with the American Convention and human rights. The NDCs, excellencies, are being formulated by states with no compulsory obligation for wide consultation, for transparent information, for inputs from all stakeholders, especially the most vulnerable. And this is why we have the reality today of a widening net of mass national litigations that have variable results, whether they be in the Netherlands or in the United States, which have not been effective insofar as meeting those targets are concerned. In the only instrument where the major emitter, China, submitted an instrument to the International Tribunal on the Law of the Sea, they took the position that these are all just voluntary. The NDCs are just voluntary, and they can opt out of them, but in any event, they were doing the best that they could. The United States takes a similar position, and to this end, we invite the court to consider that something that is feasible and immediately doable now, that will compel this kind of discourse and dialogue that is inclusive and participatory for the most vulnerable, but as well as all those who are affected by the climate emergency, could take place under the auspices of the orders of the court. I yield to my colleague, Professor Urbina.
If I may, I will do the rest of the presentation in Spanish. I am a professor at Notre Dame. I know we don't have much time. We are interested in bringing two points regarding the respect for democratic institutionality in the context of climate change. I will only mention the first and develop the second point briefly. As for the first one, it's the idea of separation of powers, which is an essential pillar to democracy and an essential aspect of the Inter-American Charter. And I just wish to enunciate the principle we would like to suggest, which is compliance by states of their conventional obligations regarding climate change, the responsibility of all the state powers, the executive, judicial, and legislative branches in their constitutional powers. And within these three powers, there's a strategic power for the legislature. The second issue we would like to address is the suspension of guarantees. The request for the advisory opinion talks about a climate emergency. We believe it is important for the court to explicitly use the language, saying that emergency is different in science and civil society than in the convention. In the convention, an emergency can be caused to suspend guarantees. In this sense, the Honorable Court has the opportunity of providing guidance regarding suspension of guarantees in a context of climate change, and it can suggest that the fact that a climate emergency is not an emergency as under Article 27, the fact that we have change affecting all states in itself is not reason enough to suspend guarantees. If we take it differently, it would lead to a differentiated use of suspension of guarantees. Now, that does not mean that a specific situation such as drought could lead to the suspension of guarantees, but the climate crisis in itself, throughout all its duration and expansion, is not just caused to suspend rights. As the Honorable Court has said, suspending guarantees is something temporary and exceptional. You just have one minute to close. Thank you. It is a statute of exception, such as suspension of guarantees is not enough to address a full approach as we have. We are ready for questions, and thank you for comments.
Thank you to the University of Notre Dame for their participation. Now, we will recognize the representatives of the International Human Rights Observatory of the Mexican Bar Association. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning. My name is Alexis Cervantes. I'm a member of the Mexican Bar Association, and I'm here on behalf of the International Human Rights Observatory. Greetings to the President and the other members of the court and members of the audience here with us, and thank you for this opportunity to share the highlights of our written brief with you here. And in closing, and before I go into the topic at hand, I'd like to thank Yvonne Jorkina Tovar Silva, who unfortunately wasn't able to come with us today, but is one of the main authors of our written brief submitted to the court. In order to clarify our submissions, we are going to divide our presentation into three parts. First of all, we'll talk about our interpretation of the obligations incumbent upon states in view of this climate emergency as a consequence of the duty to prevent and guarantee human rights. We'll also speak about the obligations under the convention to protect and prevent for, when it comes to environmental defenders, women, Afro-descendant communities, and indigenous communities in particular. And in closing, as a final part, we will focus on the state obligations that we believe should be there to preserve the right to life in light of science and human rights, and especially about the importance of the right to access information and to transparency in this fight against the climate emergency. With that, and now going into point number one, as to the duty to prevent and guarantee rights in the framework of the climate emergency, there are two obligations that we believe are incumbent upon the states. The first one, in designing public policy on climate change, the state must consider the specific effects on those persons who are especially vulnerable, as is the case of women, indigenous peoples and communities, people in transit and in migration, the elderly, persons living with disabilities, and people, persons living in poverty. The state must create channels of communication and incorporate their needs in designing public policy, and they must be heard, but not just one, on an ongoing basis, actually. There must be a follow-up as to the development of these vulnerable populations. We need rules to consider, to take them into account at all times. Let us be reminded that in humankind, those who are poor and vulnerable are the first to die and in largest numbers. They're the ones who are most prone to disease and to experiencing damages from climate change. Let us not forget as that when the aristocrats get a cold, it is the working class that dies of pneumonia. So it is important for states in their policymaking bear vulnerable populations in mind. Number two, the second obligation actually under point one, it is crucial for the states to create mechanisms to obtain the best available scientific information, and when appropriate, traditional knowledge, knowledge of indigenous populations, and of, in order to include them into those policies and actions. And also, under the Paris Agreement, states must guarantee traceability. They must be able to produce the information that they are using as a basis for policies and steps being taken to protect the environment. These activities, these obligations must be monitored and must be reported on by states on a regular basis. As to the second point about the protection of environmental defenders and other vulnerable groups, in this regard, and as per the American Convention on Human Rights and its additional protocol on economic, social, and cultural rights, the ESCAZU agreement and ILO Convention 162, states must guarantee a safe and enabling environment for persons, groups, and organizations promoting and defending human rights when it comes to the environment may operate without threats, restrictions, or perils. And women defenders, indigenous communities, farmer communities, and Afro-descendant communities are vital voices in fighting climate change. They must be reassured that their right to life, humane treatment, freedom of expression and opinion, and right of assembly are fully guaranteed in the legal frameworks of the states, and that is why states must take the necessary, effective, and timely steps to prevent, investigate, and punish any attacks, threats, or acts of intimidation brought against environmental, human rights defenders in the enjoyment of their rights, especially when it comes to a climate emergency. It's fundamentally important for the state's legislation to include provisions about the due protection to be extended to these persons. And as to the last point, it is extremely important for us to underscore the role of access to information and transparency, to preserve the right to life and survival, livelihood, also in the face of the climate emergency. The right to access to information in this area allows us to understand the causes and consequences of the climate crisis, and furthermore, it creates awareness in people, companies, and other stakeholders as to the need to face this problem and address it. This responsibility is incumbent upon all of us, but we believe that this responsibility is undertaken when everyone in society, states, governments, understands what this is all about, and there is information available about the topic. That's why there's a need for rules forcing states to be completely transparent when it comes to climate change. In that regard, the ESCAZU agreement is especially relevant, as is the Paris Agreement, and under the principle of maximum publicity and bearing in mind maximum vulnerability, persons and communities, the states must authorize the authorities to generate, collect, and make available to the public and disseminate relevant information so that, in a systematic, proactive, timely, and user-friendly manner, it be made available. And this must be done on a regular basis. The technological breakthroughs that we see every day, the impact of artificial intelligence, the new components that we see on a daily basis, may have an, will have an, may have an impact in the area, so we need to be up to date in that area, and that information needs to be reliable and comprehensive. It's essential. Let us be reminded that information is power. It is our input as citizens, as a society, to be able to fight major problems such as climate change. And that is why we would like to ask this court to recognize and promote with states the need and the importance of transparency and access to information agencies within the state. These agencies have a vital role to play in fighting climate change, and today, unfortunately, as an example, in Mexico, our transparency and access to information agencies are fighting for their lives, and let us say that their role has an impact on vital, vital issues such as the one at hand today. We would also like to invite this court to consider that the states should look to other modern legislations, Europe about AI, neuro rights, and other rights that have an impact on human rights in general, principles such as ethics and transparency, principles such as human-centric development with, when it comes to any activity that has an impact on climate, on the climate crisis, and also explanations being offered and consequences being examined. All of this must be borne in mind in fighting climate change and this as an emergency. I thank this court for this opportunity.
I would like to thank the International Observatory for Human Rights and the National Bar Association of Mexico for your participation in this hearing. We will now begin with questions from the judges. Judge Patricia Perez Goldberg, do you have any questions?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much for all of these interventions. They have been very illuminating. We don't have much time, and we have quite a few speakers, so I will have just, I have just one question to ask to the representatives of the University of Notre Dame. I would like you to go into a bit more depth on two subjects. First of all, what the professor was saying, Desierto, Professor Desierto, about measures that would make it possible to be, to improve, make the principle of effectiveness more specific, both under the Paris Agreements and all of the other relevant instruments on the subject in determinate, and of course, the convention for determining the contributions, the NDCs of each country. Perhaps you could go into that in a bit more depth, and also about the audit, the audits that you mentioned, and how you would relate that initiative to the work being done by the San Salvador Working Group. Is there a connection? Would it be complementary? Would it be instead of? So this is a question for you. First of all, Professor Desierto, and then Urbina.
Thank you very much, Judge Perez. I would say in the first place that the approach is complementary to what is already being done. The necessity of having a mandatory audit at this point is because there are already existing NDCs and climate actions that states are implementing in a very variable way, and we don't know the degree to which they truly realize or fulfill the human rights obligations of these states, right alongside the goal of promoting or seeking carbon neutrality. A classic example of this is the United States' own NDC, which recommends that electric vehicles must be adopted. Not everybody has $75,000 to pay for an electric vehicle. For a lot of people, even looking at the batteries that are used in electric vehicles, there's a lot of child labor and mining and of the rare earths that go into that, but nobody is scrutinizing how these policy benchmarks are being put in the NDCs, which is why we've had to have national litigations, especially it was been effective in the Netherlands in Uganda, to force the government to justify its climate ambition right alongside its international human rights duties. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Professor Urbina, in view of the shortness of time, I assume you didn't have time to talk about this, but in your written submission, you made reference to the analysis of the principle of proportionality. Perhaps you could talk about that.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Madam Judge, we did mention the principle of proportionality in discussing the effectiveness. The idea is, not to go into a lengthy methodological debate, the academic literature is complex on the subject of proportionality, but the idea was to say that, it's a very, it's a very basic point, the idea that is shared by people who are, who agree with that proportionality is critical, that it's not necessary to sacrifice one right in favor of another in general terms. There are various ways to meet the obligations that are part of fundamental rights. In some legal systems, for example, there are rights that are established in broad terms, but there are obligations that can easily be overruled in certain specific cases. In other legal systems, for example, rights are much more specific, much more limited. They're strongly asserted, but they are very limited. What we don't see happening, and what is out of aura, would be to establish a priori obligations that overrule others, that displace others. So in terms, especially in the terms of the principle of effectiveness, states have obligations from climate change and other obligations from human rights, and they are bound by both, and they need to know how to integrate the two. You can't sacrifice one in the interest of the other. Thank you for your question. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Judge Perez Goldberg. Judge Veronica Gomez. Thank you, Madam President. I first would like to ask the Dean Celorio. Dean Celorio referred to differentiated approaches. We've heard a lot about this in these past two days, and she referred to symbiosis between the Belen de Pará Convention and the American Convention in Belen de Pará, as well known within the inter-American system. We also have the big challenge of intersectionality, not just talking about gender. She also referred to indigenous peoples. UCLA is also referred to indigenous peoples. So how can we use what we have learned of that symbiosis between these two treaties to extrapolate to other circumstances we have with less instruments and standards than what we have, just thinking about gender? Thank you, Judge Gomez, for your question. I actually believe it's one of the most important points where the court has much to contribute to the gender area, but not just gender, but also intersectional discrimination. In my opinion, this is one of the most important courts worldwide in anything related to gender. You have developed very broad standards that have a wide reach, they're very innovative and specific, and what is related to the duty to act with due diligence. And if we look at the line of standards by the court, you can find that symbiosis between the American Convention and Belen de Pará. So at the end of the day, I believe it is very important for the court to continue using those instruments and that interrelation among rights within those instruments. Now, I also believe that this situation offers content to those. So when we're talking about the climate emergency, we're talking about the duty to prevent, we're talking about violence and discrimination, but also specific measures that states should be adopting. And I believe that the American Convention and the Belen de Pará Convention give us a good framework for the court to provide examples to states, to tell states, this can be an adaptation measure to address the disproportionate impact on women of the climate crisis. And when I talk about women, at least in this current time in history, we're already thinking about we're already thinking about an intersectional approach. And again, this is one of the courts that has most developed this approach. It is admired, a very useful concept. And at this time, it would be very useful to give more specific content to climate change in that sense and how states can address those specific risks for women in particular. But not just women, thinking about closed reading of the term. We're talking about indigenous women, women with disabilities, migrant women, displaced women, most of the ones that are most affected by the crisis. So again, a singular opportunity of continuing to interconnect these instruments and also interpret them in a living manner, in a very concrete manner. And I particularly mentioned adaptation because many courts are already issuing announcements on mitigation, but not necessarily providing content to adaptation, and especially regarding vulnerable populations. And based on such a rich precedent as the Inter-American Court has, you have a unique opportunity to develop standards that can be followed worldwide regarding vulnerable populations and the specific, concrete content of the measures. This court provides guidelines, provides directives. Your judgments on gender are so specific and detailed. And I believe that is something that gives you the space to truly contribute in a way that other courts are not necessarily in the position to do. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Professor Descierto? You have to talk more about the gap, sorry. I know you started with my colleague, with her question, but I think it's one of the big topics. So if you could, you said your words were the gap that this court is the one that is in a position to address the gap between the non-binding voluntary declarations and the legal obligations. And everybody has been talking about all those doors that the Paris Agreement leaves open, but the feeling is that there is a stepping stone that is missing. So could you elaborate on that?
Thank you very much, Judge Gomez. I'm not asking the court to be forced to rewrite or reinterpret the Paris Agreement. I am asking, we are asking the court to wield its jurisdiction to require that the states that have to submit these NDCs ensure that every single NDC, every target, every policy that they mention actually was constructed under a human rights approach that's consistent with the convention and thus draws on all the stakeholders who will be impacted by the policy choices of the state. And in implementing that ambition, implementing these climate actions, that the court, or rather, that the state will also be abiding and respecting and protecting the human rights of its own populations and populations under which they exercise some form of sovereign control or effective control, that they will continue to commit themselves to their obligations under the American Convention and the rest of international human rights law. Nobody has done that, Your Honor, because much as they included this paragraph in the Paris Agreement, none of the global north or the major emitting states wanted to enter into a discussion on human rights compliance with climate actions. There is always a constant deference to, states can choose whatever modality they want to meet their climate ambition, so long as they don't retrogress. But what's left from the equation is, whatever ambition they set, how does that impact the lived realities of the populations that have to deal with the choices that our governments are making today? It's for that reason, Your Honor, that we are appearing before this court hopeful that this court will stand in defense of human rights here.
Sorry, I have to just follow up.
Yes, Your Honor.
Because you also said that this gap, in a way, is the reason why we have all these examples of strategic litigation worldwide. Because everybody is knocking on the door.
Yes, Your Honor.
Trying to get individual decisions, one by one, knocking door by door of the entire planet.
Yes, Your Honor. And frankly, it is very hard trying to litigate across individual jurisdictions when we do not have authoritative international law that says it ought to interpret the 12th paragraph of the preamble of the Paris Agreement. But no one is holding other states, fellow states, to account that your climate actions ought to be consistent with human rights. It was very difficult litigation in the Philippines' carbon supermajor's case in the Constitutional Commission on Human Rights, where finally there was an adjudication there that the carbon supermajors are responsible for the human rights consequences of their emissions. It was also very difficult in Uganda and also difficult in cases like Milieu Defensive versus Royal Dutch Shell. It's so incremental, Your Honor, that if there is no international decision that could authoritatively lay this down, and I am afraid that the International Court of Justice advisory opinion and the ITLAS advisory opinion are not touching the 12th paragraph of the preamble to the Paris Agreement. I am afraid that we are stuck with individual national litigation.
And with us. Okay. Dr. Urbina?
Dr. Urbina, you mentioned something, which is how to connect all this with political civil rights, the classic rights. And you have given a task, a very particular task to the court. We don't have time, but this is a very major issue. The consequences of climate change will manifest in a way that they could trigger emergency situations. So if you could please clarify. Thank you, Judge, for the question. There's two things. One is the separation of powers, democratic institutionality, and the other is the suppression of guarantees. I will refer to both very briefly. As to democratic institutionality, the macro suggestion is to say the court and the inter-American system overall, for a long time, has richly developed democracy and institutional democratic institutions. So it's a leading system in that sense. So those developments should be incorporated, at least that is what we suggest, in this advisory opinion. And the reason for this is because the issue of climate change, given the complexity of the issue, sets forth institutional aspects. Who decides how they decide? So fundamentally, it calls upon this, different from other human rights issues. It asks for very active participation of all the functions, all the powers of the state, and for all of them to operate in due form. So it requires legislation very specifically. This is mentioned by the European Court on the Klimasenjorinen. And in the decision, it shows up and how the separation of powers. It's not necessarily something common in these matters, but it's just the complexity of the problem. Climate change first requires there to be legislation to articulate all these systemic regulations that affect so many different orders. In the previous session, we heard about electric vehicles, batteries, so coordinating many things throughout the country. And this can only be done through legislation. If not, you will have something missing. But then you need implementation by the executive branch, many technical capacities. If not, again, you will not have it all. And then you need access to justice. If any one of these pieces of the puzzle fails, it becomes very difficult to operate. So it is a great opportunity to remind states that the obligations, the human rights obligations that are related to climate change will affect all three public powers of the state. And it's a way of giving context to the institutional matters that are very much discussed, obviously because of climate change, such as access to justice. So it's all seen under the general context of the separation of powers. And as to the suspension of guarantees, our main concern there is just to preserve the statute of the suspension of guarantees as something used only in exceptional cases. It's a form it has always adopted. The risk, because we are using the term emergency in this context, and it is correctly used in a scientific civil society language, but because it is being used in this legal context, there is a risk for that concept to go out of the scientific sphere and to be interpreted legally. So you think it would be clearer to say "climate crisis" instead of using "emergency" in international human rights protection? I think it is legitimate to use the term that is used in specialized literature on climate change. But I do believe that if it is done, if you use the term "emergency", it would be good to clarify that it is not being used in the technical sense of Article 27 in that the statute of suppression of guarantees is still an exceptional statute. And therefore, there may be crises related to climate change that could trigger an emergency, as under Article 27 rightly so. But it's not the climate emergency we're living because it's in the whole world at all times. So it should not be enough cause or just cause to lead us to suppress guarantees because that would mean it would no longer be exceptional. And it is very important for it to remain exceptional. Thank you very much. No more questions.
Thank you, Judge Gomez. Judge Ricardo Perez Manrique, do you have any questions? Yes, Madam President. I do. Please. Also, for the University of Notre Dame, I have a couple of questions for you. In your brief, you said that, or you warned about the risk of doing a proportionality analysis and that there be a simplistic balancing of the rights at stake. So my question is the following. What are then the lines of action that are necessary so as to not fall into that simplistic approach, according to you? Because there is a principle according to which all rights are indivisible and interdependent, and there are all, you know, there is no hierarchy. So that's the question, why you're making that warning, which is so strong. No simplistic analysis. What's the trap that we could fall into? What's the sin that we might commit?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Judge Manrique. The trap is thinking that in trying to achieve the climate ambition, that there is only one pathway, and that pathway will always require a trade-off that sacrifices human rights. We heard earlier this morning, Judge Manrique, from the International Union for the Conservation of Nature, and how the science, even if it is the best available science, the global stocktake requires that we balance equity and the best available science, the capacities of the state involved, and we don't prescribe very specific goods, but rather recognize the right to self-determination, the right of the state to development, to choose its own path towards carbon neutrality that is consistent with the flourishing of human dignity of every single person within their jurisdiction. We are afraid, Excellency, because in jurisdictions that do not see the realities of poverty, where there is high inequality, where it is all too easy to opt for the easier electric vehicle sort of response, that governments or politicians will simply prescribe this good versus that good without inviting the public dialogue that considers the vulnerabilities, the differentiated vulnerabilities of populations that cannot adapt all in the same way to the climate crisis. So we hope, Excellency, that this part of our brief is intended to call out that precise danger. We're already seeing national litigation taking place, questioning the rapid mitigation, allegedly rapid mitigation measures that are supposed to achieve the climate ambition, but in the end will give a pass to the biggest emitters and impose the burdens on those who cannot afford it.
I understand, but at the end of the day, in every policy, be it one for equality or mitigation, there should be a balance struck amongst all rights. That's a principle, in the end, that has been established by the court throughout its jurisprudence. So we take note of that warning, but we will act as we usually do. My second question, something of concern to me. Yesterday, Professor, well, I heard you, and you just said, again, I heard you before, and you just said again. And I would like for you to please rectify this, if I misunderstood, that there is a very comprehensive regulatory corpus in terms of climate change. So there are different regulations about this. But reality is showing us that above and beyond the existence of these regulations and rules, the major players, the major emitters, pollutants, say, you know, these are but recommendations. They're non-binding, right? So do we have a corpus juriis that is just soft law? So what about that corpus juriis? As I said, the large players, the big players, believe that they're under no obligation.
Sorry.
And if I may add... Can you hear me?
Little bit, Your Honor. I'm sorry, Your Honor. If I understood the question correctly, the question pertained to whether or not there is jurisprudence that could potentially restrain the largest emitting states. And this is something that beleagers the entire international civil society movement, precisely how to hold the biggest emitters to account. The International Tribunal on the Law of the Sea, which is set to issue its advisory opinion this May 21st, was the first to receive the public written statements of the European Union, Germany, the Netherlands, China. It did not receive a statement from the United States, which is not a party, to the Convention on the Law of the Sea. Those written statements present a range of views, some of which accept that there are binding commitments under the UNFCCC and the decisions of the Conference of Parties that push, especially in the global stocktake decisions, that already require certain measures to be taken on mitigation in order to avoid further escalation of the crisis. But we do not have a settled decision on this subject yet. There was an attempt in the Supreme Court of the United States, at least in a case called West Virginia versus EPA. The Environmental Protection Agency in the United States tried to itself, as an administrative agency, force the shift from electric use to renewables. The Supreme Court said, "An administrative agency can't do that. We have to wait for Congress to pass it." So lacking an international decision that itself could be a subsidiary means of determining international law, I am afraid we are left to the mercies of the uncertainties of national and regional litigation, Your Honor.
That's clear. I am not concerned about the jurisprudence of countries in this sense. What you are telling the court is that it should take a step forward and establish certain obligations for the states about, when making their projections about carbon emissions and NDCs, to include human rights and bear them in mind. So we are an inter-American court interpreting the American Convention on Human Rights. In the terms of the American Convention of Human Rights, what is your proposal to this court? Because you've made a general proposal, which I agree with, I am sharing here. But so, under the American Convention, how do we solve this issue, which is, at the end of the day, what we have to do under this advisory opinion?
Very much, Judge. I agree, and we certainly do not request the court to try to extend or overreach. But we also do not want the court to underestimate the significance of its advisory opinions as a source of international law, as a subsidiary source of international law. Certainly, we cannot tell states, parties to the Paris Agreement that every single climate action has to follow a certain path of justification under human rights law. climate action has to follow a certain path of justification under human rights law, because all that we have is the language from the 12th paragraph of the preamble of the Paris Agreement, and that is not the governing instrument for the court. But we could do it the other way around, Your Honor. The states themselves could be obligated, in assessing their existing commitments in the NDCs, to test them against their adequacy or inadequacy as against realizing the rights that have been safeguarded under the American Convention and the jurisprudence of this court, including most especially economic, social, cultural rights that this court has been responsible for developing and in progressively realizing for the American system. In the same token, we also don't expect that the rest of the world will suddenly do the same thing. But there might be a jurisdiction, Your Honor, that says, "But this is an advisory opinion of the inter-American court. It's a source, a subsidiary source of international law." This might provoke the pathway for how to ensure that human rights is no longer at the periphery of the climate regulatory system, but instead is at the heart of it. The whole discussion of vulnerability that we had in the intergovernmental panel, the sixth assessment of the IPCC, focused on all vulnerabilities, but completely forgot that these vulnerabilities are structurally created from human rights deprivations, Your Honor. And that is a voice that this court could very readily educate the rest of the world on, and hopefully, all the other courts in the international system. Thank you, Your Honor.